Let's, uh, I'm gonna ask Mr. Burst if he will lead us in prayer before we start.
Father God, in Jesus' name, oh, but thank you for this day, Father. We pray God to you a blessing that we deliberate the business of this county. We pray God to you against the right decision to make, the right things to think about and look at it. And, uh, yeah, for all the citizens of Waycross and Ware County. Father, we pray God to you a blessing in everyone of our staff members, oh God, all of our employees. We pray God to you just continue to bless us in Jesus' name. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm gonna do a roll call. Mr. Burst.
Brother.
Mr. Pope.
Brother.
Mr. Lucas.
Here.
Mr. Byrne.
Present.
Here he is. Okay. We have a, we have a guest speaker. James Sullivan.
We actually had two to sign up. I don't know if Mr. Sullivan's here. I don't see anyone else.
Mr. James Sullivan, is he here?
Don't think so.
James Sullivan. He's not here.
Okay.
Mr. Thomas Littlejohn, here.
Yes, sir.
You come up, please.
Thomas Littlejohn. We're eleven ninety-two Passcall Road, Waycross, Georgia. I'm here today because ever since they, uh, they started the project on Smith Road, there've been so many rumors that's been flying around about Passcall Road. So we trying to find out, is there any plans for upkeep or any, uh, upgrade on Passcall Road? Because of the, um, the overgrowth of the hanging trees on the road, the dangerous, uh, blind corners that we talked about many times, poor water drainage, every time it rain hard. The sinking, uh, cattle gap is sinking unless the grader's applying the dirt up to the edge of where you got to go down in, just about to stop or come back up. You have to just stop, keep from damaging the path. And, um, that's mainly what we just trying to try to find out some information. Is there a plan for Passcall Road?
Scott, I don't, I can't answer that, but Scott, it, we had a plan on, on looking at those short streets.
We, we did, and I know that Public Works went out there before and cut. The problem we have is you've got a thirty-foot prescriptive easement in there. Lit, and then that we just found that out with engineering is that many of the roads in Ware County, when they're thirty-foot, we actually do not own them. We, there's a prescriptive easement. I believe that's what it's, it's called. It's with the road. It's thirty-foot. Um, I've had, uh, engineering to go out last week when Mr. Littlejohn, um, signed up and they looked at the road. Uh, they didn't see anything issues with the road as far as ruts or, you know, uh, potholes and those kind of things. But it still could be used, you know, we'd have to keep going back and cutting it, but you're gonna get an issue, an issue where you're gonna go outside of that, that right, right-of-way lines to, to cut it back like it should. And I think there was an issue. I don't know if, if Michael wants to respond to it, but one of the neighbors across the street was upset, didn't want them cutting. Okay, that makes sure I wasn't in confusing that with another, uh, another road maintenance. So, um, you know, but those are the things we have to deal with, especially with a road like that.
Which way do y'all usually come out the most? John, y'all come out towards Smith Road or y'all go through by the Fuller?
Going by the cattle gap.
By the cattle gap, yeah.
By the Fuller. That's, is that the best way, closest way in and out?
Keep them going a mile around.
Oh, yeah. Okay.
Especially when it's raining, torrenting.
I don't think there's anything we can do about the cattle gap, but I belong to the Fullers. Cattle gap, I belong to the Fullers.
Yeah, it's, it's one of those issues that I mentioned before that you have. It's, it's quasi-public or is it private? You know, it's private when it needs to be private and it's public, public when it needs to be public. Um, so you've, you're into that, that, um, that issue there where you're having to work around that because you don't, the county doesn't really, from what we've been able to determine, the county doesn't really own that road. Yeah. It's, in, in, in essence, it is on private property. So, you know, we have, that would be have something we would have to, to look into and try to resolve altogether. And that's not the only road. There's, there's quite a few like that that we've discovered. Engineering has looked in it to find out what we legally own.
Cattle gap was replaced, but I don't know if it's just sinking now or the, like I said, the grader is grading the dirt up to the edge of it and making it so high.
Yeah.
On one side, that's what I'm saying.
I think the county has raised that cattle gap before.
It's been, I think Michael's told me, they, they've worked on it before. Yeah.
Michael, hasn't that thing been raised before?
It's sitting on concrete, um, blocks now, so, or concrete beams. I can check and see if it needs to blake dirt away from it.
Yeah.
And it could be dirt go up right at, you know, something. I can check on that.
Okay. Scott, you said the seven neighbors complained about us mowing these side ditches?
Well, it was in the area where they cut it and they cut it back, you know, cut the right-of-way and, and it, I guess at that point they got over the line a little bit and one of the neighbors got upset about it. It's been sometime in the past, I think.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
You know that guy, Littlejohn, that, that talks, that grumbles about that cutting the right-of-way?
Yeah, I know who he is.
You know who he is?
He's right in front of me.
Yeah. Does, does them trees need to come down?
They need to be cut to where you can see around the corner, because it's just a dangerous accident risk waiting to happen. Because if you, if you drive by that and you can't see a thing until something coming around, you meet face to face. And my driveway is about fifty feet from it. If I come out going in and somebody's coming around that corner fast, they right on me before I can even do anything. It's been like that.
Michael, is that the person you're talking about? One that lives on the corner? Okay. Okay.
Well, if it's creating hazard, I asked a lawyer, can, can that be taken down if it's creating a view?
I think the first thing we need to do is, uh, this is the first I've heard about it as far as the ownership issue. We need to figure out, is that a public or a private road? If it's a private road, you know, we're very limited on what our options are. If it's a public road and our responsibility, yes, you know, as far as address, addressing safety concerns and everything else, um, we can look at it. So, that'd be my recommendation is, you know, let us look into it, see what is the actual status of the road, um, and then we can make a recommendation on what our options are.
Okay. We can do that.
Do that. Yeah. Uh. When I, when I rode out there, rode the road, and the first thing I saw had a sign saying it was a private road. Nah, that's just a sign up there. I don't know if it's a private road or not. But the issue he's talking about, which he's been up there several times about it, is that in that curve and like, say, you don't have that much latitude as far as once you get close, approach that curve and someone is coming from a different way, you got probably a millisecond to make a decision which side to get on. So, what I was thinking, and I'm, I'm glad you brought it up, is first establish whether it's a private or a public road. All right, and if it's a public road, then even though this individual maybe not wanna cut the trees or cut them back or whatever, but if it's creating a, uh, hazard for the motor and public, I think that's something that we as the county maybe we need to look at that, you know, not so much that we just trying to go and, you know, encroach on the property, but it's because of safety reasons. It's not like you wanting to go there and clearcut it. You want to just kind of get where you get more visibility.
But I want to be clear that even within a public road, we would only have the right, within the right-of-way, unless you're taking a step beyond to, you know, condemn property too wide in the road. We would still only be able to work within the right-of-way.
Even if it's creating a hazard for the motor and public?
Well, e, unless we condemn the property, yes, because that would be private property.
What if it is a prescriptive easement and not a deeded county right-of-way?
Well, I think even with a, I mean, again, we gotta look at the status of the road and if it's, you can have ownership through what they call a prescriptive right, which comes from usage for a certain period of time. So, you know, i, i, it, it may well be that that's the way that we have ownership of a certain part of the road, but we're not gonna have eighty-foot of ownership because you're not gonna have that type of usage. And so all I'm, um, I guess giving a caveat to or a warning is that, you know, we'll be within, if it is in fact prescriptive, we'll be within the prescriptive right-of-way, um, or if in fact it is deeded, we would be within the, the deeded right-of-way. So, we'll look at what the options are and see. Obviously, we don't wanna, we don't wanna hazard a situation and if there is a way that either through, you know, the county or, you know, through communication with the landowner possibly, you know, we can get it resolved, then hopefully we can.
Can you just, in a, in layman's term, the difference between a prescriptive easement and the deeded?
Sure. So, you know, a deeded easement would be, for example, if I own a piece of property and, um, and, you know, a county road runs beside it and you say, I'd like to pave this road, I would like you to deed me this amount of land. I actually give you a written, either warranty or quitclaim deed, that actually gives you the legal right to that land. So, that's one way. The other way would be, you know, by prescription or by usage. And there's just, um, kind of historic Georgia law allows for certain, you know, you'll have dirt roads across, especially South Georgia, that historically have been used as public roads. There's never been a deed, a written deed to the county that said, this is county property. But the law says that if it is used as a public road for a certain amount of time, within that portion that's used, that prescriptive right, then the county and thereby the public, you know, has a right to use it. So, it's somewhat of a fact-intensive analysis to know, you know, how much has been used, how long has it been used, how often has it been used, all those different type.
Okay. We'll, uh. We'll get back with John. Mr. Littlejohn. Okay. Let's go on to the, uh, agenda items. Hey, the group helped insurance renewals.
Mr. Chairman, uh, we've got, uh, John, Mr. John Leggett, uh, in attendance to go over the renewal information for the commission's, uh, review and consideration. So, I'll turn it over to Mr. Leggett for him to, to do so.
Thank you. Good afternoon. John Leggett with MSI Benefits Group. Glad to be here again. About a year ago, standing here doing the same thing. So, here we have July first is when the county renews. And so, I'm here to talk about the new plan year that will go to effect July first and to get hopefully approval then so we can move forward with the employee benefits program. You should have received a presentation, it's kind of like this, Ware County, twenty twenty-two benefits renewal. We'll go through this briefly here. Um, as you recall, in twenty twenty, the county made a decision to move from what's called fully insured contract to self-insured. And, uh, that year, you know, when you're fully insured, you pay a premium, they pay as claims, no matter how the claims run, the county's paying a premium. Claims run horribly, you still pay the same premium if they run great, you still say, same, pay the same premium. So, we moved to self-insured and then the county pays the claims, you pay, still have Anthem, we're paying administrative fee, we use their network and they're the ones paying the claims out of, on behalf of the county. Last year when I was here, um, Anthem had given us numbers, which I'm gonna go over the new numbers this year, but they gave us numbers and we were looking at a significant increase in expected claims. Basically, what they do is they say, here's your fixed cost premium and here's what the claims are gonna look like. And, uh, we made, we didn't really make any changes to the plans. There was some, a little bit of increase to employee deductions, but got stuck with it. And the reason we, it makes sense to go self-insured is what we experienced this year. So, on page two, you'll see through February, the claims paid by the counties are just over one point eight million. So, if you go over to the bottom right under cumulative claims paid, you see the total there. The, the number for the year was about four million. That was the number I presented last year and what Anthem anticipated. As of right now, we're about six hundred and forty thousand below where we would've been and it's looking like we're gonna be about a million below what they, uh, anticipated for the year. So, had we been fully insured and they said, this is what your new premium's gonna be, and went and ran that well, Anthem would've, say, would've made a lot more money. But because we're self-insured and the claims weren't there, the county's the one that's re-coming was there. So, it's been a really good plan year, um, and we're gonna watch that and we'll report back this year's over in June. So, um, with that, if you go to the next page, page three, feel free to stop us. We'll go along. Page three is the plan design, because you know, we have two plans referred to as a base and a buy-up. They're both open access point of service plans. Um, you see the, you see the deductible, co-insured. We're not recommending any changes to the plans again this year, nor we recommending any, uh, deduction changes. Some employee deductions are, we recommend to hold where they're at right now. Uh, we see this across the board, this, this day and age, what's happened the past few years, but enrollment is actually down. We have two hundred and ninety eligible full-time employees with two hundred and thirty enrolled. Last year, the number was about twenty-four, uh, was about two hundred and fifty-four. So, we're down by, uh, about twenty-four compared to last year. There's fifty-seven employees that way. If you go to the next page, page four, there are, um, a couple of things we look at when we're, when we're working on the renewal. We got the fixed costs, which is that first box there. The fixed cost is what we plan, pay to Anthem for the stop-loss insurance. Um, you know, when the county's paying the claims on every individual up to that hundred thousand dollar deductible, beyond that, the reinsurance stop-loss would kick in. So, you pay a premium for that. You pay a, a premium for Anthem to allow us to use their network for them to pay the claims and, and, and that. And so, our fixed cost right now is about eight hundred and eighty-five thousand and they're anticipating an increase of just over seven percent. That'll go to about nine hundred and fifty thousand. It's about a sixty-five thousand dollar increase. That's the small percentage of what the county spends. If you go below, look down below that, you'll see the claims. Um, we're on a, we're on a mature contract now, twenty-four twelve, and there's no, they're not anticipating any increase in the claims for this year, which is how we budget. Anthem says, you know, this is what we expect our claims to be. This is the maximum. Um, generally, the, the expect is gonna be about eight percent of the cap, the maximum. And so, they're anticipating no change in our liability for the next plan year. So, if you, if you look at the four million, four hundred and sixty-one thousand, that is the, the maximum. Just below that, the three million, five hundred and sixty-nine thousand is the expected. You take those two items, add them together, subtract out what the employees are paying, which is about six hundred and five thousand dollars annually, you get a budget number of about just under four million total. So, when you look at where we're at for the current year, it would be about three million, eight hundred and forty-five thou, forty-eight thousand, going to three million, nine hundred and thirteen. So, as overall, it's about, it's less than a two percent budgeted increase, uh, under this plan. We did go to market and I think that our, we gotta, we, we had some stop-loss claims, other claimants that go about that hundred thousand, and I, I know that Anthem probably would've hit us with a little bit of an increase, but we informed them that we weren't going to market. We checked a couple of the TPAs. We stopped, we, we looked at the stop-loss and we looked at the pharmacy coverage and when we put it all together, Anthem still had the best numbers there. Any, I'll stop right there because that's really the gist of the medical, the rest of the dental revision life insurance. Are there any questions on any of this?
You mentioned that, um, some of the employees, I guess, were fifty-seven, just wait not to get insurance at all.
Correct. That's probably, you know, they have it elsewhere, coming through a spouse.
Right.
So, as our administrator representing this county government, you are satisfied with the results so far of the program since we've started self-insurance?
Absol- absolutely. Um, I'll, I'll tell you another stat, you know, before we moved from the fully insured contract to the self-insure, we were in the ACCG pool. We're still part of the ACCG program. We're just not fully insured. This year, the average increase for ACCG was twenty-eight percent. That's those fully insured counties, well, you know, that across the board, there's probably about sixty, I think. It was around a hundred. It's come down a little bit over the years, but the average increase, like, um, twenty-eight percent. So, you know, when, when you're fully insured, you're, you're at their mercy, you know? We hope that you can get somebody to come in here and give you a positive quote and you can negotiate with them or you'll, you make a change. But when you're, when you're self-insured, you have to get, make sure, you know, your administrative costs really need to be, but your claims ultimately are your claims. And, um, you know, the network matters, the hospital and the doctors. We wanna have them, the network that we, um, that employees want access to. And so, Anthem does have the best discounts, uh, in the state. So, in order to have access to the Anthem network, you have to have them as the administrator based on our size. So, we were to make a move to a CIG now, a United Healthcare or somebody like that, they would do a good job, no doubt, but their discounts that they have, the hospitals and, and, and providers, just a little bit, just aren't as good as that Anthem. And I mean, it may be five, six percent difference. When you start talking about five or six percent, four million, that's a big number. So, as long as, you know, the employees are happy and, and, you know, uh, the network sufficiently down here, where everyone has access to the doctors, hospitals they wanna go to, then you absolutely, Anthem's a big dog.
And the more, more you're feeling with the, you hear the comments from the employees, you, or do you stand on?
So, I, I mean, I think it's worked out really well. Um, I don't know of very many complaints. I don't know if HR's gotten very many. I hardly, I, you normally would hear about them, but I don't think we've gotten any. Um, but this been a big benefit for us to go, uh, self-insured, uh, because we're in the pool, as you well know in insurance, the strong takes care of the weak. And then that's what's happening, what he was just mentioning, with that average increase in the pools going up about twenty-eight percent. So, we, it's, it was definitely a good decision. We just, you know, hope and pray that we can keep going in this direction and then be able to save, save the money that we can.
Because there are pros and cons even to being self-insured too, right?
Oh, yeah.
I mean, I mean, huh, fitting with paying, I mean, it's good, like I say, but a lot, a lot of us predicated on the claims, amount of claims and everything. So, uh, I guess that's why I know Ms. Bailey, she constantly have update some things about, you know, different programs and stuff, try to keep everybody healthy, you know, so we can maybe avoid some of the claim. But, but there are pros and cons to the self-insure also.
We have, we have that stop-loss, which is, I think, didn't you say two, two or three claims? Three? And that comes in as a big benefit to keep that, you know, from going out the roof, so to speak.
That's after an individual client goes, reaches a certain limit, then another, the other part of the insurance kicks in and takes care of that.
Correct.
Gotcha.
So, the employees' insurance will stay about the same as it is now, correct?
At the same. Yes, sir. We keeping the premiums where they are.
I got one question, if I don't mind, Mr. County Manager, sir. I'm sitting here looking at the deductibles. Um, when you look at that out-of-network deductible, when you're talking about for family, forty-seven thousand, that's more than a lot of our county employees even making a year out of pocket before it pays a hundred percent. You know, that, that's, I'm, I'm retired cop myself and that's more than I make in a year. And I know they don't make much more than that now. Would it be too much of a cost increase to have those deductibles lowered? I mean, cause I'm, I'm, like I say, I, I know what these guys and gals make.
You're talking about out-of-network, right?
E, even the in-network. I mean, the fifteen hundred, thirty-five hundred out of pocket's not bad at all. But then when you look down at the seventy-nine hundred, fifteen-eight for family, that's half of some of these people's salary, you know?
Yeah, those numbers are actually, they're set by the Affordable Care Act and it's actually higher. So, these actually aren't even to the maximum that the, uh, ACA allows. So, if you look over the buy-up plan, you'll see that that one's four thousand, eight thousand. So, the thought is for those people that, you know, are worried about, I'm gonna have, uh, surgery or something's gonna happen and, uh, I'm on the low side of pocket. It's four thousand per individual, capped at eight thousand for the family. So, if I were someone like that, I might say, I'm gonna go with a buy-up plan and pay a little bit more out of pocket. So, even on the base plan, it's seventy-nine hundred per individual, but it's capped at a family for, uh, for fifteen-eight. As far as the out-of-network, ninety-nine percent of providers out there are in-network. You have a harder time finding a doctor or a hospital not in the Anthem network than you would, uh, find one in San Antonio. Because, um, you know, they had, it, it gives you the protection, you know, if you wanted to go somewhere, you had, you wanna go to Texas, you know, even, even out of state, you've got the PPO network, so it's a humongous, humongous network. Um, but it does give you just in case there's a provider or some, somewhere you wanted to go that didn't accept any insurance, maybe, wasn't any claim, it does give you protection and out-of-network coverage for that. So, so the out-of-network covered, the deductible is a rare thing for anybody to ever even to get, okay? But yeah, so I think the, the in-network, out-of-pocket maximum leaves eighty-five hundred now, eighty-six hundred. So, we're still below that, but that's set by the ACA.
So, a big benefit to the employees. They just need to make sure whenever they go to get some kind of surgery done, that it's done in-network.
Oh, absolutely. That's why, I mean, the hospital's gonna do that because they know the insurance companies got more money than, than individuals. So, they wanna get paid and if they were to, you know, not go through the motions of getting the approval by the, the, the plan and someone has some big surgery, good luck getting paid. They'll pay it back over ten years or twenty years, yeah.
Is there any more, any more information?
That's on the medical. Um, the dental revision, we received an increase this year from MetLife. It was with Anthem's a few years back. We made a change. Now, we're recommending we move it back to Anthem, Blue Cross for the medical, I'm sorry, for the dental and vision to, all, all being in the same plan, same carrier. Um, and actual, we got an in, increase with the dental. And so, Anthem is below where MetLife is coming in on the renewal, same benefits. They match the benefits there. And, uh, the vision, uh, same thing, match the benefits and they're actually well below current right now. We got about a four percent increase from that on the vision. Anthem's coming in at about ten percent below current on the vision. And then the last couple of slides are low life, life insurance. There's no change with One America on the county paid life insurance and L T D, life, uh, one-term disability insurance, nor is there a change on the voluntary, uh, life insurance for short-term. So, if you go to the very last page, it just kind of summarizes everything here. And it's really between option one and option two. Option two is changing the dental and vision to Anthem. Option one is keeping it with MetLife. So, I think the recommended option to, would be to go with option two, which would renew the health plan as is and move the dental and vision to Anthem.
That's on page nine, down at the bottom.
You recommend the option to?
To. Yep, that is the option. Yes, sir.
So, um, and I guess same question that was posed, Mr. Moore, Ms. Bailey, as far as you being HR directly, you haven't really received a lot of complaints or anything and everybody's pretty happy with everything?
They are. I mean, you get your, you know, Anthem's giving me problems with this claim or I'm having problems with this provider, but nothing out of the ordinary. I mean, but that's the nature of medical claims and insurance, nothing major. Over the years that I've been here, I, I would recommend me.
And so, you recommend to go with Anthem on the dental and the vision?
Yes.
Where the MetLife were better last year?
Well, they, they, they didn't need any increase last year like we are this year.
Okay.
And we do save a little bit on, which is actually not in fact, we do save a little bit on the administrative costs for Anthem. I think it's a, a. I think it's a, a five thousand dollars. It will reduce our fixed costs on the medical side by moving the dental revision again. Um, so there is that. I think, I think actually I may have worked that into the number. So if you look at option two below, um, you can see the total premium, we'll call it premium, that clicks any claims, what the number would be under option two, the four million seven hundred fifty-one thousand. And then you go to the right of that, overall, the increase, not even a, it's one and a half percent is what it ultimately come down to. The employees' costs, about eight hundred thousand, employees pay for everything annually. And then the net costs, three million nine hundred fifty-five thousand, which is an increase of sixty-five thousand or right at one point seven percent.
I think the bottom line is we want what's best for our employees. I mean, and it costs savings that they can have and, you know, convenience, you know, that's, that's the bottom line.
Any more commission, any more questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, John, I appreciate it.
That's going to be Georgia Department of Corrections Work Detail Agreement.
Uh, this is-
We'll carry this over to the vote.
Yes, sir, we will, yes, sir. Um, this, uh, Georgia Department of Corrections Agreement is for renewing our work detail that we have in place now. We used to have two details, but we have one now. Um, and so this is to, uh, renew that agreement at an annual cost, uh, forty-nine thousand, three hundred and eighteen dollars.
I got a question. I think the contract guarantees it's ten people, if I read it right. Say they didn't have five people, you know, for a solid month. Or are they reimbursing us?
They have been in the past before, but I don't know recently if they're doing that or not.
I've seen it in the past, but I'll see the invoice after we sign, you know, send in the-
Okay. Yeah. Yeah.
Could you check on that for us?
Well, I can, I do know we, I don't think most of the time, we only have about three, don't we?
Three to four.
Three to four, yeah. So sometimes it's not even, you know, half of what we're supposed to have.
Didn't get one today at all.
Right. So when we don't have them, we don't get the, do we, I don't think we pay for that when we don't have them.
So what if, like, like, uh, Commissioner Baum's saying, if you got five, I mean, do we still, say if they carry on for three or four months, just add five, you know, and we're supposed to have ten, wouldn't that stand to reason that we should kind of get?
Well, the thing is, is the way these are, these are structured is, is the amount that we pay pays for the guard. They're going to have to have a guard with them, a correctional officer. And so you're paying for that person to be out. I know it's still a benefit even if we do have three, four, or five, um, because, you know, that's more than what we got now. And so that's, that's really where that money goes, is not to pay for the work, is to have that guard out there at all times.
Any more on it? So we got to pay that regardless how many they send us?
Yes, sir, the only time that they take away is when they don't show up and those kind of things. Um, but like I said, if the guard's there, it's typically same old, same old, so to speak.
Okay, we'll carry that over.
Yes, sir.
C, the Georgia Power Utility Relocation Agreement on Osman Road, R.C. Davis Road area paving.
Yes, sir, this is the, uh, the Utility Relocation Agreement with Georgia Power, uh, for that pre- paving project in that area there that you spoke of. Uh, the amount to have the utilities move that, that location is eighty-two thousand, six hundred and forty-one dollars.
Okay.
Um, I don't know if you had any questions. I know Brandon's here, if there's anything that you have questions about.
On that, any commission?
Well, it's got to be done.
It's got to be done.
Yep, okay. Let's carry that over there.
Yes, sir.
Okay. D, Proposal Change Order on Old Nickel Highway, Road Improvement Phase Two.
Yes, sir, this is a, uh, change, proposed change order, uh, with East Coast, uh, to do some, um, deep patching on, um, Swamp Road, uh, in three different areas there. Total amounts, four, uh, forty thousand, four hundred and seventy dollars and ninety cents.
So we're patching the patching?
In some, yes, sir, yes, sir. And I've included some pictures I had engineering to, to take for us. If you wanted to see them, it's in the notebook there.
That first patch. Michael, how long has it been since we replaced that pipe in front of the highway right there? Right there where Gilmore Lane comes into Swamp Road?
It's kind of like this path in the curve right there.
Yeah.
The big canal.
Yeah.
Yeah, Paul was still here, probably been eight, nine years ago.
Did y'all? Right there by the taxi station where he lives? Is the pipe still good? Have y'all checked it out? Make sure we don't have, need to replace it before we spend this money to repatch it?
That pipe's been replaced. It was just the dirt is either settled on it or something, you know, after the, after the break, I'll get it back up.
How would they do that? Would they come in and grind it all the way down to the base and start over or they just?
Basically, uh, quantities included into foot, I got, there's some niches on there and everything. Um, the, that would be the approach on the, the crossing you asked about first. So you'll let down and put asphalt back, so we'll be repatched over that area. You've got some, uh, pavement, um, settlement in those outside little paths. In one of the pictures, you can tell. So as you're coming in, there's a lot of settlement on the outside areas from all the heavy vehicle traffic that's been, um, driving out there. And so it's, it's a little bigger area with that first one. Because of those, um, the pavement approaches, we're going to try to create a lot of that while they're out there and try to straighten all that up. Pretty good quantity of asphalt used for that one, if there's no other one, we're going to go to.
Cause one, I think it's patch number two, where the cement cracked all the way across the highway just about.
That's the one north of Swamp Road, that's true.
Before you get to Swamp Road, that is true. So how are they going to fix that?
That's going to be milled across to, um, so that the asphalt end, end label will be flushed with the asphalt at both ends of it. And then pulled across with, um, leveling and then over top and with the, uh, as he's got in his, um, description and his report there.
And they use the same template the state of Georgia sent you a while back?
Yes, sir.
Was there, were there asphalt overseamment?
Yes, sir.
Certain type of-
Fourteen oh one, standard Georgia DOT standard fourteen oh one.
We got paid to fix them one time, we got to fix them again. That's got the liquor cache over right there. That's what that is. What do you think color the crack?
There was, uh, that was one of the first ones that's put in and they-
Not tamped, go ahead and tell it like it is, it ain't tamped, the bottom ain't tamped, the road's going down.
And the log trucks got on one of those, uh, little green.
When they laid the pipe, they ain't tamping the dirt. I tell you what color, all of them pipes do that. And they going to still do it. If you put asphalt on top of them, you can mill it off and level it back up after a few years and it'll work. That concrete's hard to mill off. I think we ought to have two prices on that thing, at least two prices on this miller. And then you have another.
They, uh, were discussing, we're trying to get another price. I don't think we got anything back yet on that.
Do you want to just table it until we get the prices and put it on next meeting?
Let's do that.
You want to do it?
I mean, they, the people have been putting up with it for a pretty good while. Wait till we get a couple of prices then, okay? Just table it then.
All right, thank you, Brandon.
Okay. Got an alcohol license application for thirty-seven ninety-eight Memorial Drive.
Yes, sir, um, the applicant, uh, Ms. Jamie McQuig, um, has submitted an application to, uh, get a alcohol, uh, excuse me, a liquor beer and wine consumption on premises for that location, which is the former King's Bowling Alley. Um, based on the information that I got from planning and codes, uh, Ms. McQuig does not have any disqualifiers that would prevent her from obtaining an alcohol license.
Now, how's that going to affect the kids this, uh?
That's, that's what I was thinking. Oh, my, my biggest question here is, I know somewhere in state law, when I was policing, I can't remember the exact code section. Steve might remember this as well. But, Mr. County Manager, the, uh, if more than, I believe it was fifty percent of your income come from alcoholic beverages, nobody under the age of eighteen could even enter the door. And that about right way it was read?
I don't remember.
Uh, but if, if over fifty percent of your sales is from alcohol, you got to be eighteen or older to even walk in the door. So.
I do know next door is the skating rink.
Right.
And so, yeah, that would be-
That'd be the issue by that.
I remember my grandkids liked to get bowling out there. I mean, I don't want them.
Yeah.
My opinion, by the way. Anybody else on it?
So that's our question meets all the county requirements?
Based on what we have now. But as the question arises, is, you know, the situation with minors being in, in the general location.
Is there a reason not to?
What, what I would recommend is, I mean, if, if they need our qualifications for an alcohol license, they've applied for the license. I think we go through the normal process to either accept or reject. Now, it's a very good point and they may not understand, you know, what the implications of obtaining that license are. And so on their end, you know, it may be that they desire to do some more legwork before it is issued to be sure that they understand, you know, what the ramifications may be, so. But as far as our standpoint, you know, we can alert them to that issue, but I would recommend that they seek their own counsel and, and do their own research on, you know, what that may or may not be.
I mean, just like the youth of, at our church, we decided later for all the kids taking bowling. I wouldn't want them to get bowling, you got, you know, folks walking around with a big drink in their hand. You know, that's just my personal opinion.
So would this be at the bowling alley itself?
Bowling alley, not the skating rink, but bowling alley.
That's what it says, the bowling alley.
And I got, I've been trying to figure out something here also. Okay, this Jamie McQuig is the one that put in for it, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And on this application for the alcohol beverage license, I was looking through it, they have a social security number there. Then on another one here where it's got, uh, Rick's Alley LLC, Jamie McQuig, but it's a different social security number, like.
That's her husband or something, isn't it?
It is, yes.
That's her husband, that's Harris Rich.
Okay, that's why I'm trying, I mean, but it's got her name up there though.
Well, he's got spouse, Harris, it shows him a spouse.
Let's see.
And that's what the doing business has, Rich's Alley LLC.
Okay, I just, I just went, I saw two different social security numbers in, I was just wondering. I know it's probably a good reason, but I just want to find out what it was.
The one on the front page, the one that's up toward the front, is, um, her husband's social security number. And then the one on the back is her social security number.
So it's no way we could, well, like I say, I, I guess, father advised our attorney, we, if they meet all the qualifications, but then if we got some concerns, is there, could we delay that or?
Certainly.
I don't think the state-
Especially if the paperwork doesn't match up. If we have, you know, something we need to clarify from the paperwork, we certainly can do that. And I know, um, uh, Jane's sitting here this evening, so, you know, he may be able to assist in clarifying some of these.
We move it to, if you want to table this, move it to the next meeting.
Cause I mean, we, because I don't, I don't, I don't know if the state allow that alcohol be served in a place where children bowling alley and skating rings or, I don't know.
I'll make, I'll make a couple of calls out to some of them.
Let's table it, you want to?
Table it to the next one, I'll make a couple of calls myself. Cause if the ATF went out there, what, what they're going to do is they're going to put a chain of lock on that door. I mean, seriously, that will happen.
She needs to go a little deeper into it, okay? Let's go on to F, Mobile Home, Homestead Pre-Bill Decals.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, this was brought up at the last meeting, um, about the decals. Um, Tax Commissioner recommends eliminating the display of Homestead, Homestead decals, uh, but mandate the display of the pre-bill like we, like was discussed before.
Yeah.
I like it, I like the idea.
I think the Tax Commissioner explained it.
He explained it very well.
Why the rationale behind doing it too. So I don't, I don't have a problem going with his recommendation on that.
Okay. Any, any more discussion on it? We carried over. The Air Canister Purchase for where county jail?
Um, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, this was, uh, sent to me by the sheriff of one part of the jail, the, uh, guard office. Uh, the HVAC unit is not working at all. And this is a proposal from, uh, Conley Sheep Metal to replace that unit. Um, it's a, uh, excuse me, it's a mini-split, a two-ton. And, uh, I put some information in there from a email that he sent us, just basically saying that, uh, there was, he actually had to get two quotes or checked on two. One he can't get, but there is one that he can get for, um, roughly about forty-four hundred dollars to put in that, um, in that guard office there inside the jail. That's, uh, materials and labor cost.
Okay. Why aren't we bidding this stuff out?
He called just to get it, uh, just for that one. And I, the units that are out there from what it was explained to me were all trained and he was trying to go back with that same, same, um, type of unit.
Well, the ones they've got out there last, I mean, it's almost twenty years.
Twenty, soon to be twenty-two years.
Yeah, I mean, they've lasted.
Yeah.
So we're not-
It's not working at all, it's totally out.
So we would not be buying the equipment on the state contract and then paying for labor?
That's correct, it's the whole unit, yes, sir.
It's like me, it has to be bid, okay? Is this over your li- uh, limit to?
Well, the, the purchasing policy would have to bid out, it's just that we'd have to bid that out and then wait through it. I mean, they, you have a unit that's not working, so they just have to wait.
I've, I've had two phone calls from employees out there, you know, that's actually bought personal fans to-
Yeah.
I mean, cause it, it, it's getting hot, hot, hot.
Well, since this is a kind of like a halfway emergency, we, I think we should go ahead and get it fixed.
Yeah.
I'm in agreement with that.
Yeah, cause how long would it take if we went bidding it, how long?
Probably ninety days.
Yeah.
At least, probably by the time we put the bid space- At least, probably by the time we put the bid specs together, get it advertised, and then depending on when a meeting is scheduled like this one, you know, it could be, like, you know, close to, at least sixty maybe.
Yeah, summer might be gone.
And we're not talking, it's not like we're talking about a million or two million dollars.
It's forty-four thousand dollars, yeah, just change that unit out.
Yeah.
Yep, sheriff declares an emergency, you know, approach to the jail, that's to me, that, yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, I think we need to go on, but, and we were talking about, while back, about buying several old units, what, we're talking about getting them and?
Yep.
Yes sir, there's, the problem is, is some of these units are still working, some are not, um, this was the one that's completely out, there's others that they're having to repair and, and so forth. Um, but if you purchase them all, the warranty start, starts the moment you purchase it. So if you put it in storage, wait, holding it for one to go out.
Yeah.
Then that clock's ticking, and it's really the same way with this building, when we built this building. Uh, they installed the units, and it was sometime a little bit year, about a year, almost a year and a half later, probably. And so by the time we moved into the building, the warranty is pretty much gone on those units. So that's the problem, you, once you put it in, that's when the clock, clock starts ticking. So we couldn't, they, they told us, they said, yeah, you put it in storage, but you're not gonna have a warranty by the time you do put it in.
And they're talking about a twenty percent increase come January, wasn't that right?
I think so, I don't remember the exact percentage increase, but it's, you know, it would be an increase. But, but, you know, we're trying to get all the use out of the ones that are in there now, and it might be better to spread that out and replace them as you need to, rather than trying to, to go after it one time, especially if you don't have a warranty on it. Cause you, I, you, just, I think, once we moved in here, we had one unit in this building, something went wrong with, I forgot what it was. But it was about thirty-three hundred dollars to fix it, thirty-five hundred dollars.
It was a variable frequency drive.
Yeah.
And we talk, we talking about our staff that's having to work in these, this element. You know, that, that's my concern.
It's the same way with the front hall of the courthouse, we had to put that temporary unit in because it was gone too.
Yep.
And, uh, we're having the, by the way, we're having the back hall put in now, it's installed, I'm not sure if they have it on yet, but the front part had to have a, we had to rent a unit, temporary unit, until they could get that one built, and that could be six, seven, eight months from now.
Have they got the one over here working now?
Yeah, as far as I know, they do, they, they had, they had a crane, had it put up there, and, um, I'm not sure if it's on now, if it's actually operational. They had a couple of things they had to do, I believe, but they did get the, uh, the frontman installed the temporary unit. I don't know that it's working, turned on yet.
Okay. Any more on it? We just carried over there. Okay, airport land lease.
Yes sir, um, the airport manager, um, Mr. Jordan, sent this to me, it's a land lease for, um, Denise and Jack Hamilton. I don't know the area of this, I don't have a, um, a, uh, survey plat of where this is located, I don't think Jesse is doing it anywhere. Not unless, do you happen to know? Ricky Rowley's old hangar, okay.
Now where is that located at the airport? They already have it leased, they're just renewing it or? Or is this just a first-time lease?
They're purchasing, they're purchasing it from Mr. Rowley. So they, they'll be transforming the lease out of the Rowley's name into the Hamilton's name.
To their name, okay.
And are we keeping the prices the same out there at the airport? Does anybody know? Cause I, I was asked about that today at lunch.
As far as what's in place now?
Right.
Yes sir.
Okay.
Yeah, there's a, there's a timeframe on the, like, tea hangar leases, based on dates, they increase over a certain period, and then they create, it's just kind of a step and slide scale type thing over time.
Was the yearly lease on this individual, can you tell you, it would be on the agreement?
Uh, don't know, there's not a, there's not a, uh, total on there, but I can calculate it.
Well, some, some of the lease bases are more than others, aren't they?
Yes sir.
Depending on size.
But depending on size.
That's what I'm saying, but they're not all the same.
Any more on it? No, we carried over to the location. We, uh, appointment for the Ware County Board of Assessors. I think we had one to resign. And, uh, we got a.
There's a letter that's, uh, been sent to us.
Tiner.
His time.
To serve on the, is she, uh, willing to serve? Is asked to serve?
She's sent a letter saying she's willing.
Everything, all or? Any discussion on it?
I think she's a good one for it. She's been an educator for, I think, close to three decades, right? About thirty years, in our school system here, is that right? Ms. Tiner, Sandy Tiner, almost thirty years she's been a teacher in our school system. So I believe she's a good pick for it, in my opinion.
Yeah, so she was definitely willing to do it, you know?
Absolutely.
Yeah, she's, she's willing to do it.
Yeah, she sent a letter indicating that.
Saying that she would. Okay, we'll carry that over. Any commission items?
I've got a, uh, one, two things to mention, if y'all don't mind commissioners, Mr. Chairman, Mr. County Manager. I know several of y'all are aware, this weekend, we, we lost one child, Bentley Gibson. I'd just like to mention his name, it's a four-wheeler accident. And, uh, I still consider it, cause they have a waycross address, but we had a Keegan Moore, that had a golf cart accident. It was actually in Brantley County, but it was right off of Central Avenue, which have a waycross address. Uh, and nonetheless, nine-year-old little girls in ICU with part of her brain hanging out. So I would like to remember those in prayer, and, uh, let's be more cognizant, if we can, as, as the adults in the community, to four-wheelers and golf carts on these roads. These kids are just out there trying to have fun and enjoy themselves, but, you know, it, it takes a village to raise a kid, and it breaks my heart, being a retired cop, anytime a child loses a life. I mean, that's just devastating. I'm, I'm, I'm half-century old, I've been blessed, a lot of us in here have been blessed. This ten-year-old little boy and a nine-year-old little girl might not have it tomorrow, with little boys already gone. And little girl could go any day, that just breaks my heart. So I'd like to remember them, and their families, and their loved ones, and, you know. The second thing is, I would ask our commission, I, I got a major item I'd like to talk to y'all about, so I'd like to go into an executive session for about ten minutes.
So you're making a motion?
Making a motion to go into an executive session.
I'll second.
You say it.
And we just need to state for the record, um, we don't have to take, state the specific topic, but we have to state, is it one of the allowable topics? Is it personnel, real estate, litigation?
Real estate. Our real estate that we, is our property.
Not buying or purchasing real estate?
No, man. It's just a, sat down with three different families over the weekend and made major, major complaints about one of our pieces of property here.
And it may be that we need to hear a little bit more about it to understand exactly what it is, but just based on what you just said, I don't know that that would qualify for executive session, um. But perhaps what I may suggest is, if we adjourn our work session, we'll discuss, um, you know, during the break, and then if an executive session's needed during the regular meeting tonight, we can do it at that point.
Yes ma'am, that's fine.
Or we could go ahead, but then, if it, you know, if it would not qualify for executive session, we could just go, go ahead and discuss it now. So that, I guess, is the gamble we take by taking that plan, but, um, but I guess that's what I'd recommend, if you'd like to discuss it in executive session, just to be sure, we wanna, you know, be sure that we're in compliance with the Open Meetings Act.
Well, the, uh, the complaint was on our airport, our airport here. And, uh, the business that we're fixing to lose to Baxley and neighboring airports. And that was, I mean, I actually had a three-hour meeting this weekend, and then had a lunch meeting today about it. Uh, it, it was brought to my attention, and I've got several packets here that they gave me, hand gave me, delivered today, that they're, the reason they're thinking about, instead of this being their stop location, Baxley being the stop location. So would that meet the criteria or?
It sounds like it.
See, it sounds like it.
Doesn't sound like it's like social domain.
Well, I can, I mean, if we need to talk about it, we, I talked about it now, we're just waiting till later to talk about it.
Yeah, it was bad, alright.
The family that I sat down with, his brother's an actual pilot, he flies up from Jacksonville, and, uh, the stuff that he brought me today, first thing was the phone number that it shows, and I looked this up myself, went to Waycross Ware County Airport, and it shows two-eight-seven-two-four-five-six, that's the phone number, and that actually goes to Agri Center, which is out there on Harris Road, but it's, it, they answered the phone, Agri Center says, is this the airport? And no, it's not the airport. We get these calls all the time, but it's not the airport. Um, the second complaint was, we're open Monday to Friday, nine to five. There's no mention of weekends being open, there's no mention of if a pilot needed to come in and land at ten, eleven, twelve, one o'clock at night, being able to get gas, being able to fuel up, you know, having a lodge or something to relax in. There was complaints made of the, wanting to know how long the mold had been on the chairs out there.
How long of what?
The mold had been on the chairs out there in the building. I mean, they, they would sit on the chairs outside the building, but refused to sit on the chairs inside the building because of the uncleanliness of it. Highlighted some things that the, and this was straight off our website, straight off of Ware County's website. It said that airport offers parking facilities, retail, dining services, access to local hotels and transport options like rental cars, buses, and taxis. How? That was his question, how? You got it on your website, but it's not available out there. And then he immediately went into, he traveled every road around Ware County with his brother, who lives in Ware County. Traveled every road around Ware County, you know, and you got those blue signs that says the hospital's this way, or the sheriff's department's this way, or the prison's this way, but you have no signs nowhere saying where the airport is. He could not find a sign anywhere. And he looked at me very abruptly and said, look, my brother's a pilot, and those pilots work in a clique, and they all talk to each other. And he even, he even printed out a thing for me that says, uh, our airport in Georgia is ranked a hundred and forty-one out of two-hundred and sixty-one. So we're not even in fifty percentile.
Has all this been brought to your attention in the past, Mr. Moore?
Mm-mm, the only thi, thing about the phone, the phone numbers, that's somewhat confusing. The gas is another, was one we had discussed because of our hours of putting in the system where you can do the, you know, the pay at the pump situation, putting that in, um.
And he did, he brought that up too.
Yeah.
And he said that the gas was actually cheaper in Baxley than it is here.
Really?
Yes.
Okay.
And he, he said around fourteen cents cheaper, what he said.
Well, this complaint, some of the management should look at.
Yeah, I'll check into it, sure will. Now, the signage stuff, I brought that up before, um, we do definitely need to try to get that sign replaced out there, but also the directional signs you're talking of, um, will have, especially on the major state highways, we'd have to get touch within to get those put together and put out there.
I understand.
But also too, the services that are mentioned on there, the Ware County, Waycross Ware County Airport did, like, for instance, you could get rental cars there back when Enterprise have it, but, um, yeah, there's for years, it's just, it's not the same anymore.
Right, and it, it's a level-three airport, from what I understand, and it's one of the only level-threes in the whole southeast.
Yeah.
There's not a directory out there that tells them who they can call or anything?
Not that, they, they look for, you know, information to, to call somebody or whatever, and there was no information out there. And this phone number right here, like I say, I dialed the phone number, sitting at a lunch table with him today, and they answered the phone, Agri Center. Said, is this not, is this the airport? No, this is not the airport, it's Agri Center. So we get calls all the time.
Okay, I'll check into it, I'll, each one of those.
And, and County, Mr. County Manager, I'll give you what he gave me.
Okay.
Because it's, I mean, I know the airport's not gonna generate a lot of revenue for Ware County, but in the times we live in right now, anything we can generate helps, it helps us.
Yeah.
You know, and we're talking about an airport that the Blue Angels, when I was a teenager, used to come to on a regular basis. You know, from when I was a kid up till I was in my middle twenties, the Blue Angels actually came to this airport. And would put on shows, and we, I mean, we used to have bleachers out there, we don't have that anymore.
Okay, any more? Are we coming on the, uh, Jamestown Bridge? Know anything about it, Brendan?
Yes sir, thank you for asking. We, uh, got our approvals done, back this week, and sent off to the County Attorney's Office. So we're able to get that tax check, got that sent over there, their, uh, thirty days will be up on the fifteenth of this month from the original notification letters that went out. And so I've talked, uh, sent an email over to the County Attorney's Office to be sure we stay on those dates, and we hit all those things, and nothing slides any further than it has to, getting those follow-up letters back out. And she emphasized the, uh, proper, uh,
Procedure.
Procedure, so that, you know, if it does go to the condemnation process, nothing will get kicked out at that point because we didn't do the things we were supposed to do, we emailed to that. And there's an email that, um, she sent responding back with, had all the things that were supposed to be done as far as those notifications posted at the courthouse, and, um, so we want to make sure we do all those things so the judge will rule, you know, favorably, if we ever have to come to that point.
Okay, when the time limit's up on the letter you mailed out, you said it'd be fifteen?
Yes sir.
What's the next step then?
The follow-up letter, and I'd have to go back and. What the, all those different steps were, but there's a follow-up letter they sent out, and, uh, certain amount of days, and then we would go and do the filings after that point. After those, that time had, uh, passed, and we didn't hear anything back. You see, you, you have to have those approvals to go forward with the condemnation, so we're gonna get that out of the way.
A rough estimate, when do you think we can put this out for bid?
We're shooting for, uh, going out to advertise them the first of next month with the bids, so that we can go ahead and get the process started with that.
See all designs finished up?
Yes sir, we're working through, um, the results of those boring, boring, we're done for the bridge foundation, or we're working through the results of those tests that were done with the bridge designer, and so we, we're trying to have everything, you know, first of June, go out for bids, advertise and first of June.
By the end of summer, we should be ready to get started on it, then, haven't we?
Yes sir, uh, thirty days to advertise, and then about thirty days for bonds and contract administration and all that sort of thing, so. Yes sir, August, first of August, the middle of August, maybe, awesome.
That'd be good.
Yes sir.
They want it.
Yes sir.
Thank you Brendan. Mr. Jerry, did, uh, you get hold of the, Mr. Unis that wanted that work done out there, and find out what he wanted?
Yeah, we went out there, and the ditch is full of pine straw people burning pine straw, cleaning yards, throwing it in the ditch. Where is this at?
I don't even know, it was on, what, a trail?
Seminole Trail.
Seminole Trail, somewhere back over there.
Yeah, I've been, Mike and I have been out there five or six times, it's always the same thing, to keep throwing pine straw in the ditch, can't run.
We, that's not, no, that happens all over the place. They'll, they'll throw it out there, wanting to burn it, it'll get rain, it'll get wet, they'll leave it out there, and then that's why you get mess on those ditches.
Well, I think Brandon called a gentleman and took care of it.
Yeah. Okay. Okay. Any more? Any more County? Manager, do you have anything?
Excuse me, two things. One thing I want to mention is the, the property appraisal contract with G Mass. There was some corrections need to be made, we have the new version that needs to be signed and sent back. And the official starting date is this Thursday, so we need to get that done and send that off. We're already, I think they've already made contact with the, with the company, and they're already starting to work with them now. And the other thing too, just to point out that, you know, we got the email from DOT about the, the ten million dollar match. Five million from county, five million from the city, out of the single county T-Splus. I'm trying to find out, I got a text from Ms. Ann Purcell, our DOT board member, and she's going to look into doing the, the ceremony with the check presentation and everything, and hopefully we'll know something, we can do it all at one time. I'm hoping within the next thirty days for the, the presentation of the money, for the, the match money for the overpass.
So we'll be writing them a check, or how's this going to work?
Well, probably, probably what the city would do is they can write us the check, we'll deposit it, and then we'll write a check for the whole amount. So it's for part of the design and right away acquisition.
Have you heard from the city on it?
Yes, I did touch base, they said they did have it, so we're, I'm just waiting on the board member to let us know the, the presentation can be done.
Okay.
And we do have ours, right?
Yes, sir. We got it from the Burst Foundation.
I know the discrepancy on that leg. Scott, you mentioned about the G Mass. So what's the situation going on with the, them that is for to be furnished these tablets? Because I understand it's still some.
Yeah, the last time I talked with Mr. Carter, I don't think he's in here, I think you walked out, the last time I talked with him is, we, they are, they are going through with the, the company to get those, and once we have this contract signed, we send those tablets to them, the four tablets, they program them with the software, and then that way, the staff here can work with G Mass. It's kind of a separate company altogether that's supplying them. But they get them and send them to the G Mass company.
What's going on with our emails? I haven't received a count of emails since April twenty eighth.
That, that's another issue I'm working on now to find out, because I got a, I got a couple of complaints today as a matter of fact. Now, I can't get mine on my phone, but I'll find out.
So what's the problem?
What's that?
What's the problem?
The problem we've had is them moving the servers out of the old building, and they created all new DNS numbers. So even with, with some of the other accounts that we've had, like Gmail accounts, like I think yours is Gmail accounts, we had some of the problems working out with those too. And it's one, it takes a while for those numbers, those addresses to be recognized from the other providers, and that's some of the other issues that we've been having. But I'll find out, I'll check into that and see where they are.
Departments, or they have a problem like emailing one office to the next, or anything like that?
Not that I've heard.
Only.
Only on your phone, yeah, I don't.
Everyone's just top of their mind.
Yeah, yep.
It's just.
Mine's, and mine's just my phone. Yeah. Mine's the same way, I can't get them on my phone, but I'll find out.
I got one other thing, Mr. Lee wanted to know about that building, is that thing, is your clothes on it or not?
Well, we, no, sir, we had, I had to get the survey done to divide the back parking lot from the building. And once that was done, we had the surveyor to, to complete that, and the city said that they have to sign off on it. So it's over at the city for them to sign off on it, and I'll need to check on to that too, to find out where that is. They said they have to approve it before that goes through. We didn't know that, but.
City have to sign off on what?
That, I guess because we're splitting those parcels. Because it's actually one, the big parking lot, the building was together. And so we, the parking lot didn't go with the, the big parking lot, the ones behind it, didn't go with it, so that had to be surveyed out.
Talk to the bank on that?
No, it, it belongs, it's all under one, under where County.
So it goes all the way to state?
Yeah, the county had to buy it back, they sold it to the bank, I believe, somebody may be here to, yeah, they sold it to the bank, then realized they probably need it, and then bought it back, county did, some years ago.
Oh, yeah.
So it was all under one big parcel. But anyway, the city has it, and I'll need to check on that to see where that's at.
Okay. All right, any more? Anything else? Are you most adjourned to meeting? So moved. All in favor? Meeting adjourned.
Be back four thirty.
And we got a public hearing. Road name change. This application is Mr. John Path requesting a public road name change from Birdie Lane to Deer Creek Lane. The proposal. The proposed road is off of Poncel Lane approximately four thousand ninety-three feet west of the intersection of Poncel Lane and Jamestown Highway. And we have here any? Anything against this road being changed? Is there any? Anything against it?
I don't know that we have anybody here for or against, to be honest with you.
Do we have anybody here for it?
I know Mr. Path's not here.
He's not?
No, sir.
He just said this in to get it done?
Yes, sir. He spoke to me originally a few weeks ago and asked me how to do this, and I told him how to submit an application. And he said that I think the the family that lived there at one time, Birdie's Lane, is no longer there. And he lives at the end of the str- oh, end of the road. And he was just asking if there's a way to get it changed all to Deer Creek Lane, because I think they were having problems with mail and deliveries and those kind of things.
Okay. Yeah, I saw the map on it right here.
Yes, sir.
It could be changed.
Yes, sir. Initially, that was intended to be with the packet and just slip through and didn't get.
Didn't get in there, okay. Oh, y'all have one?
Yeah, I just got it.
Okay.
And I had a talk with with Dustin. Dustin earlier, you know, today about it. And. When I was trying to find out this Verdi's Lane, if it was named, you know, I guess after someone or someone stayed there. Now, I know what city they had a possibility if it was named after someone, if there's people that were still living, you know, they didn't just go in and change it. But you say this family doesn't stay there, no one stays there.
No, sir.
And it's really, and I also, you say Mr. Path has been there since ninety-four?
Well, initially, it was the Pat family, then it got sold in two thousand, two thousand nine to John Verdy Highsmith. And in twenty fifteen, it went from the Highsmiths to the John Path Trust. So it went back to the Pat family.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was just trying to find out, you know, and he did say have issues, I guess, with the mail, not mail or package or somebody, you know. And that's why I just wanted to kind of brought it on.
Essentially, they were having issues with getting deliveries for their mail, UPS and Feds, that kind of stuff. They were having difficulties getting them sent out there. The delivery folks, they couldn't find it, so they just brought it back to the.
Yeah, that happened.
Plus, also, there's a road in front of Mr. Task's house called Deer Creek Lane that goes back in there where our former chef, Ronnie McQuig, used to live.
Essentially, what would be going on is it would be combining Deer Creek Lane, the private road, with Verdy's Lane. And it would all just be Deer Creek, but you'd still have that separation between the public and private. Where the private ones, it would stay private, the public part would stay public.
Okay. And there's a creek that separates, is that right? Is there a creek that runs across it that separates it, or am I thinking of something else?
No.
I've been thinking of something else, nevermind.
Not sure about that one.
Yeah.
If there is a culvert there. Yeah, I thought there might be a small culvert that goes under there. I'm just looking at the area, but.
Yeah. Okay.
Trying to see if one or.
Thank you.
We're in Florida, so I have a background in.
On Verdy's Lane and Deer Creek, is there some natural?
Um.
Okay, maybe I'm saying something else.
Yeah, just the driveway. Mr. Barner, tell us what the residents.
All right. Anybody get that, or hear anything?
I got one other thing on it. Now, we're the portion that goes, who watched this, and now Deer Creek Lane goes back to that Futher's house back there.
Well, at least they have access to it.
Right, is the county not, we're not going to take in that private lane, no, so all we want is just existing Verdy.
The existing Verdys, that that would be converted to Deer Creek Lane. So there wouldn't be any change in the, of the privacy.
Okay. So it'll be Deer Creek Lane all the way from Poncel all the way into the end of that road there?
Yes, sir.
That one, okay. Any more? All right. We had to vote on that then?
It'll be on the regular meeting.
On the meeting, okay. Carry it over to the meeting. Okay, we have to get out of this now, public hearing, and I hear a motion to adjourn the public hearing, make the motion to adjourn the public hearing.
I second that.
All in favor?
Ah.
Public hearing meeting adjourned. We're gonna go into a regular meeting. Monday, May the ninth, five P M. It's five oh two, and we're gonna start the meeting. All right. We done done the pledge, the legal, everything. Let's go down to. We got the guest speakers. It's approved minutes for April of twenty twenty-two, the work session in the regular meeting. I hear a motion to approve the meeting minutes.
All promotion that we approve the meeting minutes of April eleventh, twenty twenty-two work session and the regular meeting of April eleventh, twenty twenty-two regular meeting.
Okay, second. Okay. Let's let's vote on it. Mr. Burst, all right. Mr. Pope, uh, Mr. Lucas?
Aye.
Mr. Barner?
Aye.
Chair vote aye. All right. Okay, we're gonna go to the group health insurance renewal. Is, I hear a motion.
Mr. Chairman, just to mention that the recommended plan with with Anthem is option two.
Two.
Which to renew the medical with Anthem and change dental and vision to Anthem, renew the life and disability with one, and, excuse me, with One America. I just want to state it for the record, that's what the option was.
That's what it, okay.
Yes, sir.
We have a motion.
Chairman, I'm going to accept the recommendation for the medical insurance that the county currently have with the details as just outlined by Mr. Moore.
Okay, I'll second that motion.
Okay. I have a motion and a second, any discussion on it? If not, let's vote on it. Mr. Burst?
Aye.
Mr. Pope?
Aye.
Mr. Lucas?
Aye.
Mr. Barner?
Aye.
Chair vote aye. Okay. Now, the Georgia Department of Corrections Work Detail Agreement. Do we have a motion on that one?
I make a motion that we set this agreement, Georgia Power, with the paving, I mean, for the change for all the.
Georgia Department of Corrections Work Detail.
B.
It's on B.
Okay, I'm sorry, George Department of Corrections Work Detail, I'm making motion to disset, disagree.
Thought we were gonna talk a little bit more about that with the, when they only like the day that they didn't show up with one, and sometimes they show up with two or three, they're paying us back or reimbursing us.
Yeah, but I think he's.
Yeah.
Said that this cost was for the guard, not for the, not for the people, I think Scott corrected that, didn't he?
He did. Yes, sir, and that's been an issue that we had. It used to be years, I say years ago, right when I started back with the county. We were getting six to eight, and then when COVID start, right before COVID started, then it started getting knocked down. So now we get three to four usually a day. But the price don't change, or say we still have to, I think.
Yeah, this is to pay the salary for the guard and all that, it'd be.
Right.
Well, I think if I'm correct on this, or Mr. Luke was saying that if the day that they don't show up at all, like.
Right.
That's why, you know, that was. That gets taken out.
Right, that'd be taken out, that's what he's talking about.
Yeah, okay.
And that language is addressed in the.
Right, it's already in the contract.
Okay.
Under discussion, Mr. Moore, the amount is forty-nine thousand, three hundred and eighteen dollars per year.
Yes, sir. It starts July one and ends June thirtieth.
Thank you.
Okay.
So correctional officers are making fifty thousand dollars a year?
Probably by the time they benefit and stuff, probably.
Every time they furnish him a bus to drive around and all the insurance, I mean, he.
Sounds like they got more. More put in there than the salary.
Okay. We got any more discussion on it?
We have a motion, but we don't have a s- did you say?
If we get a second, I'll second it.
I'm sorry.
Second, okay. We have a motion and a second. Okay. Any more discussion? All right, let's vote on it. Mr. Burst?
Aye.
Mr. Pope?
Aye.
Mr. Lucas?
Aye.
Mr. Barner?
Aye.
Chair vote aye. All right, now, Georgia Power Utility Relocation Agreement on Osborne Road, R C Davis Road, area paving. We have a motion on that one?
I'd make a motion for it this time, Georgia Power Utility Relocation Agreement.
Okay.
I second that.
Any discussion on it?
Only discussion I've got on this is Mr. County Manager. Well, Brandon's gone. Has everything been dealt with with the one family that, you know, because it's basically one family that lives out there? And that's the.
Yes, we still, you know, from the standpoint, we, there was, I think, three parcels, maybe four parcels, we had to condemn, but that will get settled. We've been in conversation with them.
Okay. Okay. That all?
What's the amount of the great contract?
Eighty, what?
Eighty-two thousand, six hundred and forty-one dollars.
Okay. Any more discussion? No, let's vote on it. Mr. Burst?
Aye.
Mr. Pope?
Aye.
Mr. Lucas?
Aye.
Mr. Barner?
Aye.
Chair vote aye. All right, now, E and L, we gonna table both of those or?
Uh, D, D and E, excuse me, D and E, we'll table.
D and E.
Yes, sir.
D and E.
Okay, D and E.
So we just need a.
Proposal change order on on the nickel high, that's right, and the alcohol license.
Yes, we need a.
D and E.
Motion and a second on each one of them.
Okay. We 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 need a motion?
Yes, sir, a motion and a second on each one, just making official.
Chairman, I have a motion that we table the proposed change order on Old Nippers Highway Road Improvement Phase Two.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Let's vote on all of them. Okay, Mr. Burst?
Aye.
Mr. Pope?
Aye.
Mr. Lucas?
Aye.
Mr. Barner?
Aye.
Chair vote aye. All right, now, on the alcohol license, we gotta have one on it too.
Yes, sir. Okay.
I make a motion that we table the alcohol license request till next meeting, till we can get more information on them.
Okay, have a second.
I'll second it.
Okay. Any discussion on it? No. Let's vote on it. Mr. Burst?
Aye.
Pope?
Aye.
Mr. Lucas?
Aye.
Mr. Barner?
Aye.
Chair vote aye. Now, on the air conditioning purchase for the Work County Jail, gee.
What about that mobile home?
Oh, yeah, mobile home, excuse me, I skipped one. Okay, that on mobile home F, the mobile home homestead pre-bill decals for the Georgia S B one ninety-three.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, what I might recommend is whatever the commission's guidance is this evening, if you all desire to go in accordance with what the tax commissioner recommended, is then have our office go back and actually implement that language into your local ordinances, and then we'll bring it back to you to formally approve that language.
Okay. Does this mean that we don't, we won't have to have a sticker on the window, or we do, as he's recommending, we still do it, or?
So what happened is Senate Bill one ninety-three, it changed state law. State law is what required the permits or the stickers be on the side of the mobile homes. And state law changed and now said only if a county requires. So now it's up to the counties each individually to determine whether or not they want to continue to require that process. And it's my understanding that it was our tax commissioner, Mr. Collins, recommendation that we do require the stickers for what I'll call just, yeah, regular, regular mobile homes. There are some mobile homes in our community and others that, I'll use the term homesteaded, where the mobile home has actually been legally joined to the real estate that it's owned. And so it's actually billed through the real estate rather than as paid for as personal property as a mobile home. So he recommended those that have been homesteaded, that have been joined to the real estate, no longer require the permit, but all your other mobile homes still require the permit. Is that accurate?
That's correct.
But it really is, if, I mean, there ain't no way to get out of not paying the taxes, but you just wouldn't have to have that sticker on your window if you don't want it.
That's right.
I I think that, I don't know, I would, I don't think I'd want it, but I don't know how the rest of them feel about it.
It is now the commission, since state law has changed, it's, it is your decision.
You see, for the county.
That's right. It's a decision for your own county. That's exactly right.
And also, I think that the tax commissioner alluded to the fact that people that have a mobile home that's that's not homesteaded, to have, they can move them around or whatever, you know, that was an issue too, wasn't it?
It was. I believe he communicated that it's hard to track.
Right.
Those, and he he thought that would assist in that process.
Right.
Because they, I believe he said that they give up the title for it.
Yeah.
Um, so that way you have them, you know, it's there, it stays there, so. But the other ones on the, for the pre-bills, you know, you're, they're able to move them in and move them out without your knowledge.
Right.
You know, because then they could go and sell it or buy one and pull it in, you never know.
But the power companies now won't hook you up unless the tax man calls and tells them that it's ready to be hooked up. So I don't see how he can, the sticker would make anything any different. They already got the laws in there that says that we, you know, you can't hook hook the power up until everything's been approved.
You know, lots of times whenever I was tax commissioner, if Sessors Office went out there reassessing property or something, if they come up with a trailer that didn't have the current sticker on it, he would give us a call and see if taxes was paid on it. If they weren't, you know, we'd go out there and put a notice on the door.
Yeah.
But I'm in favor of continuing on pre-bill, putting stickers on these trailers.
Me too.
It's like, like a tag decal.
Yeah.
You, if that decal, decal's not on there, then you know right away, either they lost it, they forgot to put it on there, or they didn't bother to tag.
Yeah. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I know that we accept the tax commissioner's recommendation on the decal, mobile home decal for the homestead, decals will be eliminated from posting, but the pre-bill decals will continue to be posted and that we ask the attorneys to put this in the code and come back with approval.
I second that.
Okay. All right. We have a motion and a second. We have any discussion on it? Okay. Let's vote on it. Mr. Burst?
Aye.
Mr. Pope?
Aye.
Mr. Lucas?
Aye.
Mr. Barner?
Aye.
Chair vote no. Okay. We have it, the air conditioning purchase for the Work County Jail.
I make a motion that we purchase the new air conditioning system for the jail and the guard unit.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we got a motion and a second on that air conditioning unit. Any discussion on it?
Where would the money come from? Your discretionary fund? Would it come from your?
We could, I mean, this small amount, we'll just take it out of ARPA, because anything that's related to air ventilation, heating in there, that kind of thing, that's one of the things that originally they said that we could spend it on.
Okay.
Yep.
Ain't run out of that money yet? Good.
No, sir.
Okay, let's vote on it. Mr. Burst?
Aye.
Mr. Pope?
Aye.
Mr. Lucas?
Aye.
Mr. Barner?
Aye.
Chair vote aye. Okay. Airport land lease. I hear a motion to that land lease to be done.
Chairman, I know the commission accept the terms of land lease as presented by Mr. Moore.
Okay.
For the airport hangar, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I'll second, I'll second that.
You got a second? Okay, any discussion on it?
Yes, Scott, did you ever figure out what that would be?
Uh, I think if I calculated correctly, it was about seventy-five dollars a month.
Seventy-five a month?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And the other leases running, what, like one seventy-five a year?
Yes, sir, and those were hangars. This is just the land lease, just the land, because they own, they'll, they'll own the actual hangar.
Okay.
Okay. There's not a shelter on that, I mean, it's not a, it's just a vacant length.
There's, there's, there's a hangar on it, and it has a parking apron right out front of it.
Oh, yeah, okay. All right. We have a motion and a second, any more discussion? Let's vote on it, Mr. Burst?
Aye.
Mr. Pope?
Aye.
Mr. Lucas?
Aye.
Mr. Burner?
Aye.
Chair vote aye. Okay, we got a appointment for the Ware County Board of Assessor, and we have, we have a motion on that.
I make a motion that we accept this standard, kinder.
Kinder.
To be placed on the Board of Assessors.
I'll second that motion.
You say, got a motion and a second? Got any discussion on it? Is that the position that Ms. Mixon resigned from?
She be replacing Ms. Mixon?
Yes, sir.
Okay, replacement, okay. Let's vote on it, Mr. Burst?
Aye.
Mr. Pope, uh, Mr. Lucas?
Aye.
Mr. Burner?
Aye.
Chair vote aye. County manager's report.
Uh, the only thing I have, I've mentioned earlier about the two, uh, H V A C units over at the courthouse, one's installed and the other temporary's been put in. I do not know if they've been turned on yet, but, uh, hopefully that'll get squared away, so we'll be ready for summer.
Okay.
Especially in that building, because it gets extremely hot in that old building.
Yeah. All right. That's all?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Commission's comment. Mr. Lucas, did you get cleared up on that?
Yes, sir.
Airport thing, are you satisfied with, with, with what?
Yes, sir.
Did you ever, uh, go back to him with what you found out?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Any more, anything else, anybody got?
No.
Uh, I got something.
Mm-hmm.
I've got a phone call from somebody that lives in my neighborhood, and there's some concern about some development going on, there was a pecan orchard just purchased over off Wakeona Drive.
Mm-hmm.
And it's labeled, I can't remember exactly what the little acronym or whatever it is for the, the labeling, but it's supposed to be single-family dwelling, and the gentleman is putting in either three or four, uh...
Duplexes.
Duplexes. And it's my understanding that duplexes are commercial property and not residential. I know right there, just before, probably five, six hundred feet, just before that pecan orchard, once you turn on Wakeona off of U S one north, turn right, uh, there's a set of duplexes on A B C, probably seventy-five feet off of Wakeona, and there's a, the third thing in is a set of duplexes. But those were grandfathered in that neighborhood over the years. But this gentleman is wanting to do this further on down, and the, the concern amongst the people that live over there in Frontier Estates is if duplexes go up in that pecan orchard, the value of their property's gonna drastically drop, that's, that's the main concern.
Okay.
And when this young lady called and talked to our office here, they, uh, basically, she was told that there was nothing she could do, nothing the, the citizens could do, that he purchased it and if he wants to put up three or four duplexes, he can. But if it's for single-family dwelling only in that, in the area, how can he do that, that's my question.
That'd be under the county department, wouldn't it be?
Yeah, I'll find out.
And that's who she called, she called.
I really don't know what that is on, but I'll find out.
The pecan orchard right off of Wakeona Drive.
As I'm driving, looking up at the...
Okay.
It's the, uh, right when you take a right off U S one north on the Wakeona, and you get probably seven hundred feet, there's a big pecan orchard on the left, there's a brick home, and there's pecan in front of it, behind it, beside it, and they're talking about putting a, a water retention pond right there on, I think it's Bland Avenue, Bland Road or something like that, the first road. They're talking about putting a retention pond there to take the bleed over from so much water coming off the duplexes. I mean, that's, they're worried about their property, and, and rightfully so. And the other thing I got is, what can we do about tractor trailers being in that neighborhood? Because there is a huge complaint going on right now in that neighborhood with, and the photo you sent the other day, there's a tractor trailer coming right off of Bland Road.
Mm-hmm.
There's no reason for a semi to be down on that road, those roads are not built to withstand sixty thousand pounds.
I'll check on that with the sheriff.
Sorry, tried to go around the train, got turned around, probably, back in there, gotta take a guess.
But, I mean, it's, it's, you know, just like we had our conversation a couple of months ago about, we pay for these railroad tracks to get, we pay C S X to redo these railroad tracks, right? Sixty, sixty-five thousand pounds going over a cross tie on a regular basis, I mean, that's gonna mess up any cross tie. You know, a two thousand, three thousand pound truck or car is not, but a sixty thousand pound pound semi will.
I think the way the law reads, if a someone that said lives back in Frontier State, if they drive a truck, they can drive it home. Mm-hmm. You know, it don't matter if it's where it's at.
Yeah, yeah.
Cause you see it all, all over, place where you'll have a tractor trailer sitting in somebody's yard.
Yeah, I've gotten that, I've gotten a call like that in that area, but there's just a lot of, I shouldn't say a lot of trucks, but there's quite a few. You would think more than normally what would live in a certain area.
But they're, they're, they're not parking in their yards either, they're parking in the street.
Yeah.
Which is theoretically turning a two-lane road into a single lane, and that is a traffic hazard, that's an accident waiting to happen all day long.
Are there any residents out there that lives there, drives a big truck, I mean, do y'all see any trucks sitting out there twenty-four hours at a time or anything? You don't?
I, I know where I live, off of Lejeune, there's none, but there is some back in Frontier Estates, I do know that. Uh, and they do, they do park their truck out on the road, they don't actually park it in the yard.
I guess they give them a ticket, bro.
They could.
Quit giving them tickets, quit parking over there. Any more? You got anything else? If not, I hear a motion to adjourn. Oh, you got something?
Oh, we, yeah.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. Yeah, we do need to make a, uh, have an official decision on the road, that's one of the things I, I left off, so, my fault.
Change the name, the name change.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, on the road name change.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Okay, okay, yeah.
So technically, what we need to do is make a motion to amend the agenda to add, what was the name of the road?
Uh, Verdy's Lane.
The request to rename Verdy's Lane. So we need that motion to amend the agenda, and then a motion to address the renaming itself.
Okay. I want, we have a motion to amend the agenda for the road change.
I make a motion that we agenda, amend the agenda where Verdy's Lane will be placed on it for a name change to Deer Creek Lane.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion on it? Okay, let's vote. Mr. Burner?
Aye.
Mr. Pope?
Aye.
Mr. Lucas?
Aye.
Mr. Burst?
Aye.
Chair vote aye. All right, now we need to have a motion to change that road. Do I have a motion to change the?
I'll make a motion to change it, the name from Verdy's Lane to Deer Creek Lane.
I'll second it.
Okay. Got a motion and a second, any discussion on it? Okay. Let's vote on it. Mr. Burst?
Aye.
Mr. Pope?
Aye.
Mr. Lucas?
Aye.
Mr. Burner?
Aye.
Chair vote aye. Okay. Now, are we in order?
Yep, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doc.
I hear a motion to adjourn the meeting.
That's our move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.